Ladies and gentlemen, I'll call the September the 4th Town Council Meeting for Order. The first order of business is the Fedenal Allegiance and I'll lay a flag, speaker, before I introduce the agenda.
Please join me in saying, "Fedenal Allegiance is unified by the United States of America and unified by the Republic of which it stands: one nation, under God, and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
All right, the next item is the approval of the August 6th and August 21st Council Meetings. Any discussion? If not, I'll call for a motion to approve the minutes that presented. All in favor? Oh, wait, I need that. Look, I'm sorry. I feel like I'm building a fort up here. The next is the adoption of tonight's Town Board Agenda. Mr. Counsel, do you have an addition to add at public hearing?
We have a manager present.
Pardon?
We have a manager present.
Okay.
Yes, Frisbee Mayor and Counsel. What we'd ask tonight is to add to the agenda the possibility of a grant application for the Franklin Fire Department. It would be just to give the town permission to seek this grant for breathing apparatus. We received one about two years ago, this would finish that out. So if we could add that to the agenda, maybe, wow, looks like it'd be seven T?
It would be seven...
T.
T. I may have to add a P here. Let me see here, I'm getting to it. Okay, so it would be T, okay. Fire Department?
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any other additions or corrections to make?
I would suggest that we push F to the head of A, just out of courtesy, as we go through here. Just my thought.
Good idea.
Okay. Now, let's see, I'm gonna have to get my stuff straight here, so I don't know where we're going. Okay. So we'll go to the presentation from nonprofit committees, okay. All right, any other additions to the agenda before we move on? If not, I'll call for a motion to amend, as to a motion to pass is called, with the addition, two additions.
How does that we adopted with the addition?
All right. Okay, all in favor? If I forget now and move on, y'all call me back now, if you would. Okay, we have a public hearing for text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance. I'll declare the public hearing open. Mr. Setzer. I have nobody signed up to speak to this, sir.
Evening, Councilman Mayor. Yeah, this is the hearing that we set last month for the text change, for the change for sidewalk width. In your packet, you should see the application, the draft text, and the findings of facts, and a page from our back-up Franklin Plan where we adopted last year that recommend us make a change of this kind. Plan Board reviewed this, recommended approval, came back, of course, the Board then had some concerns, sent it back to Plan Board. They made some changes where we weren't strictly locked into a set width where we have potential variances, if, you know, an issue came up where sidewalk was being built. And that should be in the text that you have unless our John has any changes or anything he sees that should be different.
There actually is a revised version of that in your packet, but just basically the language cleaned up a little bit. And I'm happy to answer any questions you have about it now or during this session, if you're gonna, I don't know, if it's a play to the council to discuss during the hearing or before you consider it optioned.
Might as well, since we're only right now. See if any of the council members have anything they want to add, say.
I do refresh my memory. If we want to repair a sidewalk that is, say, three, three-and-a-half, four feet wide, how does this change affect that?
So, the town as a property owner, and I think there's a dedicated sidewalk that's essentially town-owned property, you fall under the same regulations as any other property owner within the planning process. So, as such, I do think that newly reconstructed sidewalks would have to come up to that standard if that's possible. I know there was some skepticism about the idea that if the town felt like it had to have a variance from regulation, that it could pursue it. But I'm very confident you'd have, if the facts are there to support a variance, there is nothing at all to prevent the town from applying to its own board of adjustment or a variance if you felt like you couldn't repair a sidewalk where it was out to five feet. I would also urge the council that five feet is, I've looked around at some of the area ordinances, the town of Silva, they have adopted an NCDOT plan that, the traditional neighborhood development manual, that has, it assumes a five-foot minimum sidewalk. And they require it in all of their zoning areas, including government use, their government zone. If you look at the town of Waynesville, it's much larger sidewalks than five, I think their minimum is six feet. And I would also remind the council that it's possible to wind up entrapped in some litigation about whether or not you have brought facilities up to code. Now, you're not required to go find everything that's not code and bring it up. But if you're talking about things like reconstruction, it may well be that there is federal regulation that already says you have to bring this up to code now anyway. And there has been some litigation, I'm not saying it will happen here, but, you know, there's been some high-profile things, like the city of Los Angeles has a, how many billion dollars or something?
Something forty out there, a dollar or other.
They have a judgment saying you haven't brought up your sidewalks and that's what it's gonna cost, and they'll do it. So, for all of those reasons, I would urge you that the five feet proposed here is the minimum of the ADA, and is gonna mostly be doable. Where it's absolutely not, it will be possible to exempt out of it. And further, as Justin brought back to the Plan Board, as flexible a standard as you can have under the ADA, it says passing spaces every sixty, a passing space of eighty, every sixty inches every two hundred feet, if you're not gonna be able to meet five. So I think there's a lot of flexibility in even having met that minimum five feet standard in the regulation.
That answered your question, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I could drill down, but I don't know how much time I would spend on it. But if we have a four-foot sidewalk, and we have a four-foot right-of-way, and we repair a section of that four-foot sidewalk, there's no way for us to make it five feet unless we acquire right-of-way from the property owner.
And I don't think you'd be absolutely required to do that. That's where I think you have grounds for a variance.
Okay.
I've also, I've added here, and I will find that this is last sentence, the Land Use Administrator may approve an alternate plan that proposes different pedestrian amenities provided the intent of the sections fulfilled. That's what both Silva and Waynesville have done, to add some kind of flexibility to say, okay, overall, you've tried to get to this width. So that's another place we've added what the legal flexibility we can.
Okay.
But that's a great example of, this is, that fits all of the, it takes all the boxes for a variance. It's a condition of the property that we don't have more easement than this. It's, you know, not our doing, this was a sidewalk that was here, we didn't create that condition, and that's a hardship on us to have to go to the expense of acquiring new easement and everything if it's outrageously expensive. So I think you can get a variance on that thesis.
Any other comments from the board? If not, nobody signed up to speak, so do you have anything else, sir? No? All right, I'll declare the public hearing closed. And then the next item is a public session. We have Mrs. Moore signed up to speak at the public session. And I'll remind you, we're gonna limit tonight to about three minutes, we've got so much on the agenda.
I'll talk fast. We hear campaign promise, the campaign promise for open government for practically every candidate in every election. Who among you has not claimed to work toward this very cause? In fact, how many of you will soon support the proclamation of Constitution Week? Yet, with only one exception, thank you, Mr. Culpepper, you all voted to put forth an economic development grant despite the company's anonymity request. Not only are you giving away assets that belong to the people, but you are doing it under the cover of anonymity. To make matters worse, you also moved forward, knowing that the location of this gifted acre would be hidden from the public until after the public hearing. The document for this economic development grant, the documents for this economic development grant were not sent out with the agenda packet that came the same day as the specially called council meeting. Instead, the item was added at the meeting. The value of the land listed in the economic development grant is $115,878. To the dollar, that came to the, to the dollar, this is the tax value per acre of the much contested Whitmire property. A property that would no doubt stir up public opinion. Based on the rest of the information available and a few phone calls, it's easy to assume that the deceptively named Wyatt Project is Franklin Tubular Products, a non-conforming, unbombed manufacturing company adjacent to a residential neighborhood. Additionally, Franklin Tubular Products makes the claim to already have a workforce of around 120 on their website. This would call into the question the employment claims made in the economic development grant of increasing their employment from eighty-two to 115. While I have nothing against Franklin Tubular Products, if they want to own town property, they need to pay for it in the open, just like everyone else. While I know you cannot confirm or deny if any of this is true, the public is entitled to know that you are about to give an acre of the Whitmire property to a private business. On a final and a different note, I would ask that you give serious consideration to returning the nonprofit funds directly back to the people that you forcibly took it from, instead of giving it away to charities of your choice. If people want to donate it, they can donate it. If they don't want to donate it, they can do whatever they want with it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. All right, the next item of business, no one else was signing up for the public session. Was anyone that I missed?
If you guys want to talk, you can let me know.
Pardon? Yes, sir?
I'm Nicholas Seabone, I live at 51 Lakeview Drive, Franklin, North Carolina, 28734. I'd like to complain about Mr. John Martin, who has a property next to which was, at 51 Riverview Heights Road. Has anybody seen that place lately?
Sorry, we're aware of it.
Okay, I've got photos, if you'd like to see them.
We know all about it, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, we're on top of it, sir.
I called him two days ago in regards to renting his property, telling him I was out of time, and I had got a job at Caterpillar. He said, "Great, how much do you want to pay for it? One, are you white? Mexican?" And then, the subject, "Are you gay?", came up. Then I said, "How can you run a distance like this with all kinds of weeds, snakes, and everything else? There's no cutting or maintenance whatsoever." His attitude was, "The city doesn't care."
Sir, we are working on this, and I had just, I just explained that to you. We are on top of it, and, actually, you missed the public comment sign-up period.
Yes, I did, I apologize.
That's all right, sir, but I, what I can tell you at this time is, we are on top of this, and we are working on it. That's all I can tell you right now at the moment. You will be informed.
Perfect.
We will bring you up to date as things proceed.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for your time.
You're welcome, sir. I'm sorry you missed the time.
That's all right, it's just that everybody in that neighborhood works their butt off to maintain their yards, and you've got a field, a house.
Just to reinforce what the mayor said, the town is, the Land Use Administrator is, I've actually been working with authority from the county as well to apply the relevant regulations we have to that.
Good. Thank you for your time.
Certainly, sir, thank you for coming, really. Okay, the next item of business is to take action on the text amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance that we just signed the public hearing on. Pardon?
I know, we need to vote on this, and then we're going right to F, yeah.
So, is any further discussion on what we just had the public hearing on? If not, I'll entertain a motion to vote upon it as presented. Evan?
Motion.
Motion out of second, all in favor? Okay, now we're gonna move to F. F is, meaning presentation from the nonprofit funding group of applicants, official year eighteen and nineteen. I'll read the list of applicants in alphabetical order, and you can come up and make your presentation. I'm gonna ask you to hold it to three minutes, if you will, because we have a lot of people here, and we've got a lot on the agenda tonight. So, with that being said, and I can find my alphabetical list, we shall proceed. And I do sign you, I have a stop sign. Okay, the first is the Arts Council. Is anyone here from the Arts Council?
Someone is.
Okay. Welcome, Mr. Cantino.
Thank you. I'm Bobby Cantino with the Arts Council. We're asking the Town Board for $3,000 to put into community programs that serve the people of Franklin. You have been generous with your money to the Arts Council in the past. We always more than match whatever dollars you invest in our program to do programs that we have described in the narrative. I just have it in front of you. You may have seen in the news recently that we have just lost the grassroots funding, which is state legislature. It won't be lost to the county, it will be going to the county school now. We have found over the last couple of years that we were sort of at cross purposes with the North Carolina Arts Council. They were requiring expenditures and concessions from us that we didn't see in the best interest of our community, and we resisted. We hope that, we work for the people of Macon County, and we hope that you feel like we're being good stewards of your dollars when we invest in programs like Barbershop Boys and the Town Hall Square, the other programs that we do for people of Franklin. And we thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantino.
If anyone has any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Okay, the next is the Community Care Plan. Do we have someone here from, yes, ma'am?
I'm Barbara Taylor with Community Care Plan of Franklin, and thank you all for your past support. We're requesting $5,000 to provide flu vaccine and other medications to our patients. In the past, you have provided, it's been a big help, we hope to knock into the big flu epidemic, and that will help. We've been providing free healthcare to the members of our community since 2010, and they have to be at or below the 2,000 to 2,200 percent of the poverty level and have no insurance. We are focusing on education and disease prevention, and hope in the future that we'll have a healthier community. We do have four employees who are part-time, and one part-employed employee, and we have many volunteers who are very helpful. We couldn't, we haven't run the clinic without them, and we really appreciate them. Health Department does give us free space, and we're very appreciative of that, and thank you for all your help in the past.
Thank you. Good luck, ma'am. The next is the Franklin Cemetery Association. Mr. Jones, Mr. Joe, who's coming far ahead, sir.
We will share our three minutes, and it will be short.
Awesome.
I thought it would be important to bring you up to date on some factors that have occurred since the last time I was here. And we have finally sold the old house, and we were able to pay off the balance of the mortgage. And we had, I think, about five to $10,000 left. And so we've been able to take over, retake over, the responsibility of mowing the cemetery. We have someone who is very capable and has done a relatively good job. We have restricted him to two times a month. That's all we, we can't afford that, but that's all we can afford with the money we've had. And I must tell you that we have expended all of the funds that we were able to have excess from. We are selling sub-lots now, not many, but maybe, maybe two, you know, maybe one and a half, two a month, but that helps. But we don't have enough money to continue to carry on this responsibility. And that's the reason that we've come to the town, to request that you make a significant donation to the Cemetery Association. It does a lot to impress the citizens who come to Macon County. You can imagine how many letters and complaints and so forth that I have gotten. I've had a couple of them, and I brought them, but I'm not gonna take the time to read them to you, but they were, they were pretty upset about the fact that the cemetery was not being maintained as it had been in the past. And they were able to understand the situation in which the board found itself, but they weren't happy. And we're trying to take every step that we can to resolve this problem and keep continuing the maintenance of the cemetery. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Happy Tact for Humanity. Hi, Rick. Welcome, sir.
Councilman Mayor, I request from the Director of Habitat for Humanity, been here many times before, and want to thank you again. We missed last year due to the eclipse. But just to give you an idea of what was done, in 2015, we placed a roof on a three-bedroom home in the town of Franklin, replaced a roof on a two-bedroom home, and repaired the porch system, which went well over the $5,000 that we requested. In 2016, we built a 45-foot handicap ramp. We rebuilt an elderly lady's kitchen, replaced a roof on a two-bedroom house, again, well over the $5,000 requested. As well as a couple of minor repairs done in two years, with a total of 1,658 volunteer hours from the WCU sororities and fraternities. And we have a group that comes from Florida every year called Led to Serve, and they take their spring break or fall break up here to help us out. Next week, they're gonna build two ramps out in Atto. So we appreciate the opportunity to come here for you. As you know, construction is expensive. Our list keeps growing as our residents age, ramps are a necessity anymore. The average ramp runs about $2,250, just for a short ramp. You start getting 45-foot and above, you're talking some serious money. The average roof anymore runs about $5,000. So, and as we use the funds, we deducted, and attach a copy of the receipts, at the end of the year, we turn that paperwork over, so you can see exactly how we spent that $5,000. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. The next is the Hospice House Foundation. We have someone here?
Yes, I'm Ms. Austin.
I'm Michelle Aldison, President of the Hospice House Foundation. For those of whom you don't know, our mission is to provide and endow a hospice inpatient facility for our community and to support hospice. There's 39 hospice houses in the state of North Carolina, but none for our western region. The future SEC Hospice House is located on a former Drummond property at 272 Maple Street in the town of Franklin. We will be remodeling the existing home for family area and adding six patient suites, staff support areas, offices, and a chapel. We have submitted a $5,000 grant application to you all, for the, in the amount of $5,000. Should the grant be awarded to the foundation, the funds would be used to offset expenses for a construction administrator for the project. Construction administration will help ensure construction of the hospice house is completed according to plans, on time, and within the budget. Construction will take place, this, we hope to begin construction this fall. We're real excited about it, and it will take about a year to complete the project. So, we are working hard, and we're anxious to get the shovels on the ground. We appreciate what you do for all the nonprofits, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Austin. And the next is Kids Place. Welcome, Ms. Alicia.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. I want to thank you for your support for Kids Place in past years. We are so appreciative of the wonderful partnership that we have had with the town, and especially with the Franklin Police Department. Kids Place, you've got the packet in front of you, so I won't go into a whole lot of details, but we provide a vital service for the town of Franklin by, especially by doing our forensic interviews. And we've seen over the last year, a 74 percent increase in the number of new referrals. It has just been, it has been a very busy year. We've quickly outgrown the space we're in, and so we are, Maple Street's gonna be real busy, we hope, in the next year. We are hoping to build a new facility behind the Franklin Fire Department and be closer to the police department. And if grant funds are awarded to Kids Place, the majority of that funding will go to pay for the staff that does the child forensic interviews for our youth and teens and children, and to pay for some therapy. Kids Place is nationally accredited. I think it's something that Franklin should be very proud of, how we take care of our children who are maltreated in Macon County. If none of you, if any of you've never been to Kids Place, please come see us, I would love to give you a tour. And again, thank you so much for the support you've given, so that we can provide this very highly technical service that, it's just gotten more technical over the years. Thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Ms. Alicia. Okay, Macon County Care Network, someone here? Yes, sir. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. I'm Tim Hogsden, I'm the Executive Director of CareNet. I just want to thank you for your past support and your continued support of CareNet. For 30 years now, CareNet has been providing food and nurturing hope for the residents of Macon County and of Franklin. In 2017, our pantry, we handed out 258,958 pounds of food. Our soup cafe, we provided 7,835 meals. Total households that we helped was 5,944 households and 11,408 individuals. We are requesting $5,000 to help with our pantry and our soup cafe. The money will be used by product to distribute and provide a meal to those seeking our assistance and the homeless. In Franklin, 26.8 percent of families and 34.2 percent of individuals live below the federal poverty line. 78 percent of full-time workers say they live paycheck to paycheck. It's safe to say that most of the people are one unexpected bill, one accident, one sickness away from being in a crisis situation, most of which would not qualify for any kind of government assistance. That's what we're there for, is to help them in that crisis situation. If you've never been in a situation like that, it's scary and... If you've never been in a situation like that, it's scary and unsettling. We want to continue to help with those during these difficult times. We do get donations of money and food. This will help us to stock our pantry and our warehouse for the holidays and the colder months coming up. The money will be split between Mano Food Bank in Asheville and our local grocery stores. Basically, wherever I can get the best deal, that's where I'm going to go and spend the money. And we will keep receipts and report back to the town. So thank you for reconsideration. I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Macon County Humane Society. Is anyone here from the Humane Society? Oh, yes.
Thomas Cady. How are you? I'm good. Hey. Thank you for giving us a chance to talk tonight. I'm Kathy Halman, and I am the president and shelter director at Macon County Humane Society or Athelion Animal Rescue. I sent you a package that had figures in it to the middle of June. So there's a little update. Our spay and neuter public assistance since October of 2017 until September 1st, we have now helped 90 people get their pets spayed or neutered, and that's 127 cats and dogs that will not be repopulating out in the streets of Macon County. We have used $3,582 of the $4,820 grant you gave us last year. So our request is to be, is for your help in enabling us to continue this program in the county here. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Okay. The next is the Macon County Public Library. Thomas Karen, how are you?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and council, for entertaining our request. We appreciate the support you've given us in the past. Our request this year is for equipment. It's a digital microfilm reader. Although I know that everybody thinks everything's on the internet, it's not. And I thought maybe some of you wouldn't even know what microfilm looks like, so I brought a real thing.
A real thing.
A real thing. So this is microfilm. If you haven't seen it before. So much of the microfilm collection that we have at the library is the Franklin Press. We also have census records. We have land records. We have cemetery records. We have marriage records. Lots of genealogical and historical research is possible using the microfilm collection at the library. We have a digital microfilm reader printer so that people can make copies. And I thought it would be interesting to see some of the things that people make copies of. So we have an article from the past Franklin Press of Bob Scott being named WCU executive officer. We have an article that the board clears the way for Franklin's first indoor shooting range. And we have an article talking about the library improving services. And we have a copy of some obituaries, which is a very common thing for people to come and do research on. So I just brought those along because I think it's a lot more interesting to see the kinds of things that people do when they come to the library, the kinds of research they're looking for. So although some of the information is available digitally, it's not all on the internet, and it's not all free. Some of the Franklin Press is available for a fee through newspapers.com. Some of it is available for no fee through NC Digital Library. The Heritage Library digitizes a lot of old newspapers and makes those available. But there are a lot of gaps, and if you're looking for information from the Franklin Press for historical purposes, genealogical research, the Macon County Library is a very popular place to go. The reader that we have right now is about 13 years old and is no longer going to be covered under a maintenance contract. The vendor has offered us a very nice deal, so we're asking for $5,000 to cover the replacement of that machine and computer, it has to connect to a computer to operate for viewing and printing. That's our request, and we'd be happy to answer any questions to you.
Can I keep that article? Well, that was a long time ago. You need that.
Hey, you know, we have that a long time ago thing.
And Reach, I think, Ms. Jennifer? Hi.
What happened? You missed my hair, Mayor. It's obvious.
Actually, I did. Want to go be your honor. Welcome. So glad to have you.
My name is Jennifer Turner-Lynn, and I am the assistant director at Reach of Macon County. And I want to thank you, obviously, for your past support and continued support. But I also want to applaud all of the nonprofits that we have here, because as so many of them came up for me, what it recalled is the unique partnerships that we have among each other. So not only are we often using the money, we should be using the money that you allot for us for public good, but we are all supporting each other behind the scenes and trying to fill the gaps wherever we can. So for those of you who don't know, Reach of Macon County provides, is a dual agency that provides services for victims of domestic violence and sexual assault. And last year, just in Macon County, we have, in the last five years, are also providing services to Jackson County because their agency closed unexpectedly in 2012. We are the only shelter, domestic violence shelter, within a 45-minute to an hour radius in any direction. And we are really the largest shelter, domestic violence shelter, in the region and the most ADA accessible shelter in the entire region. And we are very proud of that. Last year, we provided in Macon County services to 476 unduplicated clients for a total of 21,923 service contacts for those clients that we worked with. We provided 564 hotline calls, providing crisis intervention. And specifically for shelter, provided shelter to 125 women, children, and men as well, for a total of 3,444 nights of shelter and 10,332 meals. And I think that I would just like to close by saying that, oh, there does come a point, I think, in everybody's life where you have the opportunity to stop and say what you do really matters. And for me, that moment came when I stood by the bed of a 90-year-old female who had been physically assaulted, was in the emergency room, and really was left in such a state that she wasn't able to do anything for herself. She couldn't eat. She couldn't walk. She couldn't get up out of bed. And so when I could hold her hand and look at her and hear what she needed for us to provide for her, for me, that validates everything that we do at Reach every day. And so even though you may not see those things, I want you to know that on your behalf and on the town's behalf, that's the work that we're providing. And really, each of the nonprofits here is providing that, just in a different, a different aspect. So thank you very much. And if you have questions, I'd be glad to answer those. Thank you.
Okay. The Read to Me. Is someone here, Read to Me? Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Considering our request for Read to Me tonight, we, as most of you know, are an agency that strives to increase the literacy level in our preschoolers in Macon County. We have on the agenda upcoming story walk in the JC Park, I don't know if you call it JC Park. And we are also continuing to provide the Dolly Parton Imagination Library to all our preschoolers down the hill from the Highlands. And at this point, we have 907 preschoolers that are receiving services. So I'm not sure if any of you have any questions. I'm available for questions. We do appreciate your past service to us, and hopefully, to help our little ones who are the most important Macon County citizens.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay. The next is the Literacy Council. Someone here from the Literacy Council.
Hi, my name is Bonnie Potts. I'm the executive director of the Literacy Council. We are respectfully requesting funds to assist in our in-school tutoring program. We have a Franklin core tutor, Ms. Carol Waldridge, who's here today, who organizes and trains, generally speaking, their former teachers that have retired, to go into four of our elementary schools here in Franklin and work with these children on a day-to-day basis in the school. So it's very vital to the education. We're showing much more increased test scores in the classrooms where the tutors are working. And so we're asking you, again, help us to support that. Thank you for all of your past support, and thank you for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, lady. Okay. That concludes the presentations. Yes, ma'am?
Ms. Mayor and council, my major is one additional packet. You'll see on there the Women's History Trail. After some discussion with that organization, they've requested that they would like to pull that request. We'll be hearing from them on a separate issue that may be more obtainable from this organization at your October meeting. So if we can just make note to pull that application.
Okay. So done. All right. Those of you that were here to make those presentations, if you'd like to take about two minutes to leave, you're welcome to do so. Otherwise, you're welcome to stay. So if you'd like to leave, I can't go, but... Yeah, too many, great. Okay. Sure.